I don't see.
It's recording.
Okay. There we are. Okay. Yeah, this is the one.
Can we stop recording?
Yeah. So there you pause it.
Statement that that bothers me a great deal is that the curator hopes that next year the museum will be able to count on the support of the municipality again, even though he says he has noticed a decline in the importance of the museum for the municipal council since the last election. I take great exception to this, as do my colleagues around the table, I am sure. That comment in itself has no other, no other basis, in my opinion, than to vilify council. We support the bunker military museum again by providing them with the space and again by providing them with funding year after year. We have set criteria to apply for funding and it's, it's set for all the museums in town and we ask for that to be, to be submitted. I, I am rather discouraged by these comments and this, this interview as a whole from Mr. LaRocque. To talk in regards to the, the, the council, the way he has again puts us in a very negative light. And I want to ensure the people of Cobalt that we do whatever we can to support the museums in town. And further comments. Well, I'll save all further comments for, for our, our further meetings, but again, this particular interview has a number of discrepancies that that need to be cleared up and I'm hoping that the board of the bunker military museum does so in an effort to try and clear the air. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Johnson. Do we have any inquiries? No, we don't have no general public, so we have no inquiries. Delegations and presentations. Mr. John Shimko is here to give us a demonstration on doing Zoom meetings and the options available to us. Okay, John?
Hi there. I just hope everyone can hear me. I've got a presentation. I've got it on PowerPoint as well, so I'm going to start sharing the screen. What, before I go into this, I would just like to give an example of something I'm going to be talking about where the agenda on Zoom meetings can actually be, be streamed along with it so the public can follow along. And this is the kind of thing I'm talking about. Can, can you see the screen at the moment? Yeah. So what can happen is whoever is running the meeting and hosting the meeting can follow the, the agenda in a linear pattern so people at home can read what is going on and, and understand where you are in the meeting and also be reminded of the councillors themselves that what is actually the motion. That being said, I'm going to start my real presentation. It'll just be a moment here. Okay, so the intent. Online meetings have become the new way business is done. I'm not here to sell you anything, nor am I here to convince you of anything. I've been asked to give you some of my thoughts about processes and technologies that can aid in greater transparency, public participation and democratic outreach by municipal government. My name is John Shimko. I am a self-professed geek with an interest in media. And I'm also a municipal councillor for the municipality of Tamagami and administrator of the Facebook group Tamagami Talk. So I have a little bit of background in terms of online communication. Navigating through municipal websites can be intimidating, so especially with seniors. So I've got a few tips just before we begin on what I found to be best practices in making the political process accessible, accessible and meaningful. Simple communication is good communication. Confusion is your enemy. As a first point, I think it's important to rethink and simplify any processes your citizens are required to do. The first step is letting people know where your meetings, when your meetings are. I was happy to see an attractive Facebook page that's regularly updated for Cobalt and links to the videos of your Zoom meetings. I was also happy to see an associated YouTube account. One suggestion, though, it might be a good idea to provide notification of meetings through your Facebook page with a link to both the streaming of the meetings and a link to the agenda or package of the meeting in the Facebook notification. Many municipalities also have a news or calendar link for meeting information on their landing page of the website. But this is where the balance of extra staff work and communication lies. All of the updates take time to do and the entire process becomes useless if it's not constantly updated. Municipal meetings are extremely governed by rules, even those directly involved, like councillors, staff and presenters, struggle to be cognizant of these rules and conventions. The public can't be expected to be aware of the subtleties. Many municipalities have a downloadable and onsite FAQ, frequently asked questions sheet to explain the most common of these rules. Often people who disagree with processes simply need to know the rationale for a process. I just put a little bit of a screenshot of the city of Windsor's group and that essentially says, here's how the meetings run, here's how you sign in and all the information someone would need to know in order to be a part of the process. One easy to rectify confusion is in the order of the meeting itself. Traditionally, an agenda has been used for this. However, online traditional agendas can be cumbersome. First of all, they're usually in portrait rather than landscape and your screen is in landscape. So it really minimizes the way that people can read what it is you're trying to present to them. So they become confusing and when you have confusion, stress and agitation is usually the result and that, that ends up in being an antagonistic relationship with council. It's easily solved through a slideshow presentation like I was showing before, walking the public through the meeting and often reminding councillors of the actual motion being discussed. With very little effort, meetings become easy to follow and much more efficient and accessible. Another issue is technical literacy. Council and staff need to be trained on the basics of the technology to avert the issues before they occur. Let's use audio as an example. If you hear an audio echo or audio feedback during your meeting, there's three possible causes. One, a participant has both the computer and the telephone audio active. Two, participants with computer or telephone speakers that are too close to each other. Or three, multiple computers, like we have here, with active audio in the same conference room. Having a council that's had an individual one-on-one training session can help alleviate these. And then, once you identify the problems, before the next meeting, you can usually solve them so things can run flawlessly. The solution to this, which I think I just went through, the, the host can mute the attendees one at a time. That's a quick solution. Then bring them all back one at a time. And once they do that, when the problem starts to occur again, you isolate the problem. It's not a good idea to try to fix the problem usually at the meeting. You try to make do with it until the end of the meeting, but for the next meeting, you'll be able to solve it. Live meetings online. Okay, as we turn the corner in the COVID crisis, virtual meetings will be fused seamlessly with in-person meetings and the advantages of each should be exploited. Meetings can also be streamed live in real time or almost real time, depending on the technology. Streaming is actually quite easy and relatively inexpensive. It's not a matter of better or worse technology. There's no real better or worse way for streaming. Zoom has a potential to stream live to both YouTube or to Facebook, so you meet or even both. So your meetings can continue with your own present technology. Each medium has its advantages and disadvantages. So finding a balance that meets your aims as a council is what you want to do. As a councillor myself, I'll try to give you my opinion, but it's not really, my opinion is not right or wrong. But I do have a little bit of background in this. There's four major choices: Facebook Live, YouTube Live, Zoom Meetings and Zoom Webinar. To keep this short, because I know there's a limit on the presentations, I'm going to very quickly go over the Facebook Live, YouTube Live and Zoom Meetings and then go to what I think is your best solution. For Facebook Live, essentially what happens in the meeting, you set it up and we've already set it up, so it can be very easily done. A button is pressed and then a little bit of information is filled out and then it's now being streamed live on Facebook. So it's very easy to do technically. There's a 10 to 20 second delay in the broadcast. Audio and video on Facebook are compressed to make it go a little bit faster. So it's an inferior quality to the original Zoom meeting. Facebook by default stores the meeting in its gallery and by default, comments and sharing of the meeting are enabled. So commenting is simple, however, it's problematic for constituents without a Facebook account to view or be informed of these meetings. So it is going to limit your, your range. YouTube Live, it's exactly the same process, except someone, whoever is running the meeting presses the YouTube stream button instead of the Facebook stream button. It goes out into your YouTube channel. There's a delay in the broadcast, usually about 10 seconds. YouTube by default automatically stores the meeting in its gallery. And by default, comments and sharing of the meeting are enabled. Viewers, however, are less likely to be signed into the YouTube accounts to comment because you can watch YouTube without actually signing in. So fewer YouTube viewers tend to read the comments and the comments are difficult to view if you're not signed in. So it's kind of, if you do want to have people commenting, it's kind of redundant to have it occur twice. And I know you'll probably share it on Facebook as well. So then you've got comments from YouTube, you've got comments from Facebook and it gets confusing because you probably should have a staffer at least read the comments in case there's anything pertinent. Zoom meetings. So you could actually, the, the way Tamagami does it, you could actually run it through a Zoom meeting and then you invite anyone who wants to, to view the meeting as guests, but you mute them and block their picture out. That's perfectly possible and that's the way that we're doing it. Video and audio as well as chatting is disabled to guess manually, except for the presenters and councillors. Less steps means less possible issues. That's a good thing. One of the problems is pranksters made joint calls. We had this happen in Tamagami. And, and then bring in and start screen sharing. We had a swastika, I think, shared and just, you know, some obscenities are said until we kick them out of the meeting. Theoretically malware, which is like viruses, et cetera, can also be transferred using Zoom, but it's a difficult process and chat, it's highly unlikely that's going to happen, but it is possible. What would happen is someone would send you a document and then you would open the document and then it would, it would infect your computer. Very, very rare, but it's possible with the Zoom meetings. All the attendees in Zoom meetings are recorded in the broadcast, including audience members. So that may be an issue in terms of, in terms of privacy on their behalf as well. Zoom webinar, this is what I recommend. The process for the Zoom webinar is council meets as usual, just like a Zoom meeting. Two links are created. One is a presenter link and the other is an attendee link. Presenter links, and you guys would all be presenters because you're councillors, have certain privileges. Well, attendee links have different privileges. So attendee link, the attendee link is advertised for the public to join and presenter links are given to council. What happens then is everyone comes into the meeting. The audio and video are turned off by default and, and it's very difficult, except for the host, to turn them on for anyone who is in the audience. However, the presenters, you guys are still operate the way that you're doing it here. Town councillors, committee members, applicants and town staff are panelists. If you've ever seen a webinar, essentially that's the same, same kind of process. Members of the public who join a Zoom meeting are the attendees. In the webinar format, everyone is allowed to speak at designated times, including the audience. But only the panelists can be seen for video, so there will be no video for the audience. The meeting is run by a host or host, generally the committee or council chair and a staff person to serve as host. The role of the host is to manage the meeting. Zoom webinar allows the attendee opportunity to speak during public comment periods, but then we can turn that off again. During the public comments, they'll be asked to raise their hand. So the person running the meeting will see a visual hand icon being raised and then they say, okay, someone wants to speak. They turn their microphone on, they can speak, they turn the microphone off and council can hear it. The chair of the meeting will acknowledge each attendee, raising their hand in turn. When they are acknowledged, the chair will unmute the microphone. They're required to accept this action and speak. When they're finished speaking, they go back to the other one. What's nice about this is it also has in-camera sessions. They call them, I think, executive sessions, but it's the same thing. A separate private Zoom meeting is if, when you have a closed meeting, there's two invitations that go out. One invitation is for the public meeting and one invitation is for the private meeting. You meet in public and then everyone leaves the meeting, signs into the, the private meeting. It's in camera. It's still recorded for the integrity commissioner if that, if council so desires to do that. But it's not part of the same recording as the public meeting. Then after you go in, you return back to the public meeting, sign out and it's exactly the same as what you would normally do in, in a normal process. Closed sessions are done securely and private. Once a closed session is complete, participants leave the private Zoom meeting and join the public meeting, join, using their panelist join link for any potential report from closed session. Zoom webinar is my suggestion for transparent and easily accessible public attendance and participation. I believe it's, you'd have to do an upgrade to your Zoom meeting account. Zoom webinar costs $530 Canadian per year for the license and it'll allow for 100 participants. I don't think you would require anymore. For 500, the price is 1860. They're paid directly to Zoom, so there's no middleman fee. Zoom webinar will allow for present archiving procedures. It's flexible and will adapt well the public meetings, webinars and information sessions. So you can use it to out-branch and outreach for future endeavors. It's becoming the industry standard for this form of application. It's a one-step solution and allows for balancing transparency, accountability, keeping in mind privacy, privacy concerns and control of the distribution. That is my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, John. Does anybody have any questions for John? Good, thank you, John. Is there any business arising from the delegations? Be none. We'll move on to committee, staff and committee reports. 9.1 Public Works. Any questions or comments on the Public Works report? Be none. We'll move on. It's nice to see that we're not getting the callouts to the water plant. It's very, very encouraging. 9.2 Animal Control. Questions or comments or concerns on animal control? Go ahead, Bill.
Yes, through you, your worship. I'm not sure if you should bring this up now or perhaps during councillor questions and answers, but I'll go for it. I understand there was an attack by pit bull over the weekend. It's brought to my attention and I'm quite concerned about it, but speaking to John, I understand that it's been reported to the town, so I'm hoping that something's done about it. I understand the police have been informed and also the, the animal control officer. I'm quite concerned with it. There is a law in Ontario that governs the use and there's requirements for owning a pit bull and as it, and that, that came about because of a fatality, I believe, in Toronto where a child was small to death. So I certainly don't want that to happen here, especially if we have an animal like that running around town.
Guaranteed. It has been reported to the police and I believe there were, but, John? Angela? Go ahead, Angela. You're muted.
Do, do we have any feedback from animal control yet on this issue? Because it's not just a matter of the-
You're muted again, Angela.
Okay. So try again. Have we got any feedback from animal control on where she's at with her steps? Because it wasn't just a matter of this dog was running loose. It jumped over its fence out of its yard and attacked a dog on the road.
No, we haven't heard back from her, I don't believe.
And this is the second incident with this dog now.
Okay, well, we don't know when the first one was, so it's hard to keep tabs on that, I guess.
Yeah, no, it's just I was approached by a couple of residents while I was out shopping. That's the only reason I have the background information I do.
Okay. Anything, John, or? Just a second there. John's having technical problems. Okay, Angela, John tells me that she is looking into it. And as soon as she, we get the information from her, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
I didn't even know where this happened, so it's kind of news to me, but we'll do what we can to prevent it from happening again. Any more on the animal control? Okay, bylaw enforcement. Questions, comments on bylaw enforcement? Okay, want to thank Mr. Gilvall. He's doing a great job. Keep up the good work. 9.4 Fire Chief. Report. Hey, no comments or questions on that one either? Okay, be resolved that council accept the staff and committee reports as presented. Mover in a second, please. Matt and Angela? Oh, sorry, all in favor? Okay, item 10, correspondence for council direction. 10.1, 2020 Statement of Renumeration and Expenses for Council Members. Questions, comments, concerns? Well, I have one comment. We're still the lowest paid council in the greater part of Ontario that I know of. Something to consider. Go ahead, Doug. You're muted, Doug.
Hey, did that work? God, I'm used to the space bar from last meeting. It doesn't seem to work anymore. Just, you know, when are we going to actually come to grips with that? We've talked about it for over a year now. I think probably we should look at reviewing the information that was given to us, what, eight months ago or so now? And let's just have a discussion on it, make a decision and move on. Perhaps on our next agenda.
Sounds good. We'll get it added to the agenda. Any other comments? Okay, 10.2 then. Requests by Royal Canadian Legion Ontario Command to put an ad in a military service recognition book. This is basically for information. We don't normally advertise in that magazine, I don't believe. Go ahead, Doug.
Getting used to this. I think this is that kind of an issue that it is something that I think there's almost an obligation for us to continue to recognize and appreciate the military who've served us so well. I'm all in favor of it. I just wonder how much money we have. I know John's in a budget process. But I would think something nice like a quarter page full color would be adequate. But certainly it's something I think every municipality should be doing.
Any more comments? Go ahead, Pat.
Am I muted or unmuted? I'm good. Okay. Yes, I, I'd like to see us advertise in there, especially when we do have the bunker in town as well. And, and it supports a legion. These books are quite thick. Probably a couple hundred pages each time they come out. There, people pay to put their family, their family's military history in their picture, whatever. And those books are then put out to the public free of charge. So that way, any of our veterans can be highlighted in those, in those books and this is now, are we up to 10? Nine, 10? The eighth, sorry. I think I've looked through most of them and they're quite impressive. They're very well done. So I think we should do our support that way if we can. At whatever level we feel might fit into the budget.
Okay, sounds good. Any more comments? Bill?
Yeah, through you, your worship. I'm in favor. I'd just like to know the cost. What would it cost to do this? That's basically all I need to know or I would like to know.
Okay, John? Okay, I don't think any of yous got that because his mic is, but that page two shows the cost of the ad. So it's, if you just want to make a choice that what is, how much you want to spend on it. Doug had said a quarter page full color is $570.
George? I don't, am I on again? Okay, that's good. Sorry about that. I've had trouble with the microphone in the, the system since the meeting started. So I appreciate John being here to help out. So we can bring a resolution to the council. Next meeting with an option of a quarter page or a tenth of page. It'll be up to you, but it'll be there to be voted on.
Good, folks. Excellent. Okay, 10.4 Canada Healthy Communities Initiatives Rat Request Discussion. I'm going to pass this on to John. He can fill us in on what the girls have been working on and stuff like that.
Yes, thank you, your worship. The, this initiative has to do with funding for, by the federal government on community initiatives where it's anything to do on an outside park type setting, municipal owned park that promotes activities in recognition that in this year, people have been sort of locked into their homes and, and so there are a number of options and concepts that the staff have been working on as to what's there. It is a little bit of a long shot. It's $30 million across Canada. The top end of the grant is $200,000, but there are some really good ideas there that we'd like to put our best foot forward. We have a fairly good concept going on that brings in a fair amount of items here. I was hoping to get it done this weekend. It has to be out before the next council meeting, so there has to be some kind of, you know, thought processor agenda. It is 100% funded, although sometimes these grants are recognized a lot better when there's some in-kind by the participant and we have a number of in-kind items that we can use to flesh out this area to make it a a four-season participant-friendly passive and active- a four season, participant friendly, passive and active recreation area down by the, by the splash pad.
Okay, thanks, John. Is there any questions, Angela?
Um, I went through the list and I think it's a great list. Kudos to the girls for putting it together. The only question I have is, what is meant by create a rock face for the mining competitions? Are we talking like a climbing wall?
No, I think I can answer that. The rock, mining competitions were held down at the arena for many years. Several people have organized it, I won't mention any names, but they're tired of doing it, and not only that, but we've run out of space down there to host the mining competitions. Since the one backside behind the washroom facility is rock, there was a suggestion, maybe we could find a spot there to host these mining competitions. Pat's well aware of the mining competition, so is Doug and, you know, just, it was a suggestion for if we can find a spot to host it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Pat.
I read through all the proposal and it's just terrific and yes, we do need another spot for the mining competitions because we've got too many holes in the rock over at the, the arena, we need, we need more flat space again to keep them going because those mining competitions have been very, very popular too. And I think the whole project is going to be a big bonus for our citizens. You know, so it'll give us, it'll give everyone a boost and give everyone something to do over there in the park. So all in favor of it.
Absolutely, thank you. Doug and Angela?
Hey, that worked with the space bar that time, life is getting better. Like everyone else, I was really delighted with this list of potential projects. I do think it would far exceed the two hundred thousand dollar limit that we could possibly ever get, which we probably will never get close to. So I'm thinking we should probably send them all in, see what we can get. They're all good, I, the tennis courts ones, Mayor Belanger and I looked at that about ten, twelve years ago. And the surface down there was tacky then, I don't know if it's been repaired or anything since. But I'm thinking if you want to do something for the kids like riding bikes and things like that, you need to put a new surface and probably get rid of the chain link fencing, that kind of thing, make it more reasonable. But I think everything there is really, really great, lots of ideas to go for it. I liked eight users comfort being older, I appreciate that. I think it's just a great idea, and if what we don't get funding for, maybe as a council, we can look at trying to do some of these things ourselves, like under number three mini putt, find a way to have it accessible to the public. Right now, it looks a lot like Stylag seventeen down there with this huge fence around it. I, I can't really kind of support that presentation, but maybe there's some things we can do this summer coming that would make things a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wilcox. Angela?
Um, just one thing I'd like to probably add to this list is upgrading the power down at the park. To make it more flexible for other uses as well. Can't hear you, you're muted.
Oh, okay, I'm using the power bar too, so that's probably the reason why. No, I'm glad you did bring that up because we do have a bunch of lights that are stored down at the shop and that were bought to put in the park and were never put in, so that's a a start there as to get the power grid upgraded and maybe install some light lighting.
Because my understanding is there's not currently enough power if we ever want to put on any music down in the park for speakers and lights to run.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, through your worship, I, I'm uh, in, in favor of all this, I think it's fantastic revitalizing the park spaces is integral to any healthy community, especially in light of the current pandemic. Uh, but with it being a grant and as John has stated, with it having to be submitted before the next, the next meeting, again, I'm in total support, I think we should move ahead and see exactly what we can get from this.
Okay, so we're good with giving direction for council then to send out the application in? Go ahead, Bill. Good, Bill?
Yeah, through your worship, I agree with all my colleagues. I, I'd like to move ahead with this also.
Absolutely, okay, I think the general consensus is that we go forward with it, no doubt. Okay, any more comments, questions on that one? Okay, we have to back up here to ten point three, I missed it. Discussion for the need to fill vacancies and make appointments for the Colbert Library Board. Doug, would you like to spearhead this one?
Uh, no, but I will. Yeah, we've, we've had two resignations from the library board, our chairman and our treasurer, which leaves us shy of being able to get a quorum. So we desperately need to find some more people, we can have up to nine, I think we have five at the moment, four at the moment. So I, I would like to see us make it open to the public at large, try and get perhaps as big a board as we can of interested people. Uh, certainly, I would like to make it open to everyone in the town, you know, I think younger members, people with children, parents, you know, get, get, get a little bit more involvement in it and see if we can make sure our library keeps moving in the way that our community wants it to do.
Absolutely, thanks Doug. Go ahead, Angela.
Um, given that this is for the library and we want to get as many people interested as we can, or at least get the application process started. Can I suggest that this is maybe something we might want to see if we can do a blurb on the radio about? Because I think it's very important to have a strong board.
Yeah, we can look into the cost of doing that and definitely put a couple blurbs out there. But we'll use Facebook, we'll use whatever else we have at our disposal. Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, just to follow up on Angela, yeah, I think we should use all the media that we have around that's available, the speaker, the radio, whatever we can come up with, perhaps an interview with CBC and get it right would be good.
Yeah, okay. Any more on that issue, it's too bad we did lose a couple of volunteers? Uh, go ahead, sorry, Pat.
Is my space bar working? Oh, yeah, it takes a minute to go through. Okay, well, first of all, I would really like to say thank you to all the library board meeting, members for their service because there's a lot of years of service in there. And, and to all the board members from different committees around the town. But renewal is good too. So I think we should always be looking towards that with any of them, and I think the library board is going to be the forefront here for renewal, so.
Okay, thanks, Pat. We still have a good CEO in place there who's, works very hard and runs some very, very excellent programs and I'm sure should appreciate having people to work with and carry on with what she does. Okay. Ten point five, discussion of putting out a tender request for real estate purposes. What, this is, we have several vacant properties for sale in town. I'm not sure if we have any properties with homes on them or anything like that. But we'd like to see if we can, if there's any interest out there, there has been questions coming in and I would like to get them listed with a Realtor and move on and see if we can dispose of some of them. Go ahead, Doug. Muted, Doug.
Okay, everybody understands pebbly cacks and what we're like, but anyway. Just wanted to make sure, perhaps we could pass a lot of these properties by public works and other interested parties to make sure we're not creating a problem by reselling some of them, like thinking of snow dumps, that kind of thing. There might be some properties that perhaps adjacent people might want to pick up to make a larger yard. So try and see what we can do in a positive way to make the town a little bit better without maybe hampering ourselves.
Absolutely, Bill.
Yes, through you, your worship, I, I agree with councillor Wilcox on that, but I certainly support any lots that come up for sale where people have the chance to buy the lot and perhaps build homes that would only help us as a town would sell the town, so yes, I encourage any lots that's for sale to go up for tender.
Go ahead, Angela.
I think however, however we decide to do this, we've got to be very careful that we make it open and fair for everybody to potentially purchase, not just people who are looking to make yards larger.
No, there's a process we have to follow, it's got to be made public and everybody should have an equal opportunity.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Ten point six, direction required as to whether councils desires to have regular meetings streamed on a platform such as Facebook. I'll open the floor up whoever wants to start with that one. Go ahead, Angela.
Um, I have no problem with being streamed on a media platform, I have a bit of an issue with it being streamed on Facebook for obvious reasons. Um, we've been roasted and vilified numerous times and I can't see that the comments that would be happening during a meeting would be all positive. You're muted.
Yeah, I just said absolutely.
Um, so I would prefer to see another platform used for the streaming and consider maybe just putting a link to the Facebook page rather than streaming.
Hey, Matthew?
Through your worship, I, I'm in agreement with councillor Adsett, I believe that Facebook streaming is the equivalent to the Wild West, and I don't think we need to get into that type of back and forth and, and the comments can get quite nasty on there at the best of times. However, I, I do support the portion of John Shimko's presentation where he discussed Zoom webinars, I've taken part in many Zoom webinars and the format is, is great, it, it's easily moderated and it is something that we can moderate by committee, so I'm in total support of, of live streaming, but I'd like to see us lean towards Zoom webinar format.
Excellent, and we will get this done sooner than later, so everybody will be able to watch it whichever way we decide to go. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Doug.
Just a second, councillor Adsett, councillor Johnson. I, I think the fellow's strong recommendation for web seminar or for Zoom seminar webinar makes a lot of sense. I'm always distrustful of some of the bigger things like Youtubes and Facebooks. The commentary doesn't bother me, I can ignore that kind of stuff, but it's just opening up the access to a much larger audience of people who might want to get into malware and other kinds of things, and I think we might be piggybacking a mistake if we went that route. So I, I'm going to follow up with Matthew's recommendation.
Great, Bill?
Yeah, through you, your worship, I want to also follow up with Matthew's recommendation, I think the Zoom webinar and Mr. Shim, Shiminko, Shiminko's meeting or presentation was excellent. And I would rather go that way than livestream on Facebook also. I think there's just too many too many things that we could get into that would not serve us well to Facebook.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? Go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Zoom webinar, I've been involved in those two and they're, they're very good. So I think that's our way to go.
Okay, thank you. Angela and then John?
Um, I, I think before we do anything, we may want to think about boosting our signal at the community center. I'm just watching, there's quite a lag right now happening.
Yeah, okay, that's probably something we can get done through COVID funding or something or other. John?
Thank you. Yes, the webinar system is attractive, however, and I hate to use the word however. However, I believe it's really important that we have to have a moderator, a third party in here that understands it and John is, Shimko is, is an excellent person, as you know, at the beginning of the meeting, he was it took about fifteen minutes to get things done properly and I am basically the moderator right now and I've already made a couple of mistakes on sound and on recording the first two minutes, I don't think we're recorded. So if we plan on doing this, I think it's vital that we have a moderator and some IT person that can moderate the meetings while myself as the CEO, clerk treasurer is able to do that job. Thank you.
Go ahead, Angela.
Matthew made mention that it could be moderated by committee. Could we get him to expand on that comment? Or maybe I misunderstood him.
Go ahead, Matt.
We'd have to check the, the municipal act and ensure we're not infringing upon anything in that regard. Considering it would be considered work that could be carried out by staff, however, upon clarification of that, it is something that can be moderated by committee, so I would have no problem looking after the moderation, you know, making microphones live, muting people and, you know, keeping an eye on things, participants, to make sure that we don't have anybody flashing any, you know, unnecessary visuals or anything during, during the webinar. But with the webinar format, that drastically cuts down on the, the ability for people to jump in and kind of sabotage the meeting, so it, it's much easier to moderate. Now, the only, again, the only thing that we need to check is to make sure that we're not infringing upon anything within the act and ensure that we can do this, so maybe a call to municipal affairs just to double check and, and then if that's a go, then I'd gladly look after that.
Okay, we can check with municipal affairs and get back to you, okay? Anything else, somebody would like to, anybody would like to add? Okay, John will check with, the staff will check with municipal affairs and find out just exactly what we can and can't do. Okay, correspondence for council information, ten point seven, mining museum post budget report and annual requests for support. Go ahead, Angela.
Um, I went through this information and I confirmed with the staff that this is the same financials that were submitted last year with their requests. Two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen financial statements. And a two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget. Uh, respectfully, I think that we need financials a little more up to date than that. Uh, I would prefer to see a two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen financials and I would like to see a two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty one budget.
Okay, we'll see if we can get that from them for you, no doubt.
Yes, I've already sent a message on to the, the board and asked them for that information.
Bill?
Yes, there's another question for me is can you give me the list of board members for the mining museum? Who are they? And are they active? Up to date?
They have members listed in their forums there, but I'm not sure how many of them are still active or still here. That was part of our request, was a board of
The, the report that's provided has the list of the twenty, the twenty twenty one board members.
Matt?
Nothing to add, your worship, John just clarified, thank you.
Angela? So we'll get that information before we continue going any further with that, it's and we'll definitely bring it to council. DSAB budget package for two thousand twenty one. We're getting a little bit of a cut there from DSAB. The reserve contribution for four thousand twenty nine dollars, which is better than The reserve contribution for $4,029, which is better than, I guess. Comments? Bill?
Yeah, I see. We've got a zero, yes, through your worship, a 0% increase based on the fact that they dipped into the reserve fund. This question I think I asked last year, a couple of years back. It brought to my attention that they had a pretty good surplus fund. So I see they're using it this year. So that's why we're getting a 0% increase. So I'm quite happy about that.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments? Thank DSAB for that. 10.9 District School Board Northeast Community Planning and Partnership Policy Procedures. Information for council. Comments on that? 10.10 Lake Tamiskaming Draft Tour Guide. Everyone had a chance to go through that and look at it. That's, it's going to be a pamphlet, I believe. And it's take the lake tour, a thing that goes through the town here and highlights museums and so on and so forth. And all the way around like Tamiskaming toward the Quebec side and down to North Bay and back up. No comments on that one? Okay. Have, I have a motion. Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Pat.
Okay, yeah, I was very impressed with the look of the pamphlet this year and what's coming up.
Okay. You're good. You're off. You're muted.
Yes, okay. Am I there now? Nope. Space bar. That works. I was really impressed with that, the way with the pamphlet this year. And just the, the way that whole tour has been put together gradually over the last few years. Working with the, the different museums and going on the tours and everything. This is a well-used tour. It spreads from North Bay all the way up to here and around the lake into Quebec. And it does bring a lot of tourists through from, from the outside. So it's very impressive.
Excellent. Thank you, Pat. Okay, I have a draft motion. Be it resolved that council accept the correspondence items as presented. Can we get a mover and a seconder? Doug and Angela. Pat? All in favor? Other business? Is there any other business? No closed session, no business arising from the closed session. Confirmation bylaw. Be it resolved that bylaw number 2020. Being a bylaw to confirm that the proceedings of council of the corporation of town of Cobalt be taken as read at first, second and third time. And finally passed on this second day of March 2021. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Doug and Angela, all in favor? Okay, adjournment. Be it resolved that committee at a whole meeting be adjourned at 7:29. Mover and a seconder? Doug and Matt, all in favor? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.